Kill some time, wanted to uh just flag some some recent news other than the big headlines. There's a former deputy mayor of uh planning. He uh was convicted of uh his charges, was sentenced last week to twelve years. Earlier this week, Jose Weezer began his sentence of thirteen years. Couple of weeks ago, one of the bills that we've been hoping that the ma- uh governor of California would veto. Uh unfortunately got signed, that is A B three, one, two, three. That will uh weaken the pay to play protections we have for our metro board. Um so that is a a bit of a disappointment and um. Later in the meeting, we'll we'll talk, talk a bit more about this, but um Jamie and I presented at the Congress Neighborhoods Councils. And um we've got some fun stuff planned and and looking at the neighborhood council reforms that maybe the Charter Reform Commission can take up. With that, Jamie, there was uh some other recent news that I haven't even had a chance to look at.
Yeah, just wanted to flag uh L A Times just printed tonight. Uh there was a three million dollar settlement with uh Stephen Eagle. Think I'm pronouncing that right or on Geely maybe um from uh L A D B S, which is building in safety. Um and it features actually a a cameo from Ray Chan um where Ray Chan says um in response to. Uh Steve saying that some of the actions that they were taking might not be legal. Uh Chan putting his hands up in the air replying, arrest me. Uh which I just thought was a funny thing, but that's uh three billion dollars if the taxpayers are gonna be uh out. We're already in an overstretched liability situation, so it's a it's just another really great example of how it costs all of us. When the city doesn't take its ethics obligations seriously.
Yes, and if you've uh caught some of the recent wind at City Hall, uh we are approaching a financial crisis again. So they are sweating all of these liability settlements um. And uh with that, uh it's almost five past, so we'll get started. Um my name is Rob Kwan. And uh we'll go first, just run through the agenda. We've got a bunch to talk about. Ross, if you could throw us to the next slide. Uh first, we're gonna talk about the the issue that has garnered a lot of attention. Um Rob Bonta uh making a legal challenge to our city council maps. Then we'll be going into some election links that might be handy for you. Uh we'll be spending most of our time talking about city and county charter measures. And uh then we have some fun stuff, just looking at campaign finance data that we pulled together from uh the ethics site. And you know, it takes a little bit of work compiling some of this stuff, but uh provides some unique insights on all of that. And um with that, we can get going. Uh if you have any questions, please feel free to raise your hand or uh drop it in the chat. Um we'll be going through a bunch of issues, but we do wanna make sure there's time to to get feedback or or um. Debate whatever there there is there. We've got some fun stuff with all of these ballot measures, so um. This will be recorded and posted online and there will be uh a link where you can look at all of these slides and uh pull all these links. We'll we'll throw them in the chat as we go as well, but uh know that that will be available for you as a resource. And uh first things first, Ross, if you can take us to the redistricting news. Um there's some recent coverage from the L A Times that came out on Monday. That went into a bit more detail on exactly what is in there. In uh this this confidential report that's popped up um and what some of the consequences of that might be. But um really important to just emphasize the unpredictability of what we're looking at. And i- it could go a a a number of ways, but if we were to see. New maps coming for the city of Los Angeles in twenty twenty six, it would come from two ways. City Council agreeing with Rob Bonta's proposed settlement, and this could be something negotiated over. Or them refusing to engage and saying, come at us. Which uh will cost us money. We were just talking about legal liabilities and uh this would be a big legal case to mount. Um a- and we we could go the court process, which would draw this out, which also throws off the timeline. Because if we were to have an independent commission drawing lines for the city of Los Angeles for twenty twenty six. We would really need to have that process start right now sometime in the next month or so. Because um it's a lot more simple when the elected officials are choosing their commissioners and the elected officials decide. Uh it's a lot more straightforward and and efficient. Uh it's ugly, but that it does have that upside. A an independent redistricting commission takes a lot longer. So uh if this gets drawn out and doesn't get settled till, you know, six months from now, then it's gonna make twenty twenty six uh redraw very, very difficult. Um one other challenge that we have here, we'll hopefully see some sort of report from Rob Bonta. Likely won't be the one that was uh being discussed by the council, but something. Um it seems like there's a whole lot more out there. There were some allusions in the the coverage of the report. That pointed to uh Brown Act concerns, um failure to retain records under C P R A requests kind of stuff. So um there there might be a whole lot of juicy stuff to come. Um but when it comes to the big decisions here. Unfortunately, because all of this stuff deals with potential legal liability for the city. We have a bit of a a smokescreen they can hide behind with the the legal cloud there. And um we're we're gonna have. A lot of the very substantive debates amongst our elected officials on whether or not we have new maps or not. Uh whether we force this thing go to court or not, uh those are gonna mostly be had by our elected officials behind closed doors. So that is just a an unfortunate situation that we're dealing with here. It seems as though there's there's kind of two potential outcomes here, one being that we have an independent redistricting commission draw the lines. Or that there is an advisory commission, which would leave the council with the ability to presumably vote it up or down. Uh but uh they would only be able to vote it down if there were a legal issue with that. And again, like we're having this whole conversation right now about a debate over whether or not something is a legal issue. So who knows to what extent the city council might, you know, weasel out of that and vote a map down. Because they claim some vague legal issue. Who knows? Even if we were to just take some small changes. Uh really, really, really hard to overemphasize how redistricting can involve a a ripple effect. Where you make a small change of ten thousand people, well, some other districts gotta get ten thousand new people if you took them out. And that might push them into some other district or break up some community, which forces you to change the other district that's, you know, a couple away. Um thi- this is not something that just happens in a vacuum. Um it's a little bit easier to imagine how we create this this new district that Rob Bonta is talking about in the West Valley. That that used to be a district they were looking at and eyeing for council district two potentially or district four. At least two years ago. Now, uh I I think that the potential target would be district three, given the district that was proposed for the West Valley Latino seat. Uh contained around sixty percent, I forget the exact number, around sixty percent of Bob Blumenfield constituents. So it would be the most natural move for keeping a a community together. And uh that is a district that is up for open election in twenty twenty six because Bob Blumenfield will be termed out. Um District two is gonna be filled right now. So uh it doesn't really create too much opportunity if there's gonna be an incumbent already in the seat. Um so that that is something where depending on if they go in the direction of what the commission proposed a couple of years ago. Or whether they decide to um. Try to increase the Latino representation of that district, that would require potentially, you know, the Maldef map was something that was talked about in the L A Times article. And that district reached a little bit more east to grab population from district, you know, six and seven to, you know. Uh they they still have very strong Latino majorities, but um giving the this other third district a bit more to to wait it out with. Um the the messier situation is is and again, like there's still big choices to be made. If we throw district three into there, you have to wonder like what happens to the council member Ramon's district? Does that just snake along the Southern Valley? Uh does district two hop over to the other side and Ramon's district run north? I I really have no idea. Um and and there's a another big focus on Northeast L A on districts one and fourteen. And um that's that's one where. Potential solution could be to have Hugo Soto Martinez's district snake up. A- and uh gather some of the the wider population in the northern parts of Northeast L A. Um that could be a route where they go, but you you gotta send C D fourteen and district one south in that situation. Um so they gotta get some population. Uh that also requires you to to look at, you know, what happens with downtown L A? And what happens with district nine? That is a seat that is open. Current price, whether or not, you know, who knows? Maybe somebody will get appointed to that thing and we'll have a another Heather Hut situation. But uh it is set up to be an open race in twenty twenty six. So uh districts three, nine, one, and thirteen, all of our odd numbered districts were gonna be on the ballot in twenty twenty six. So thi- this is just gonna have huge political implications for all of those elected officials. Um and uh I I. That that could easily force the council to um, you know, just say, Rob Bonta go pound sand. Um but I I I we we have yet to see the real mu- meat and potatoes of of the the legal claim here. Uh I I really don't know what we will see. Uh but one thing to just keep in mind is that our charter it has us locked into fifteen districts. And uh I I think whoever you are out there, you're gonna have a very, very hard time coming up with fair maps. For fifteen districts in the city of Los Angeles that keep a a majority of the the people happy. There are a couple of links that Ross has thrown in there to our current council district lines. Um if anybody wants to take a closer look at that, we can we can hop over there. Uh there's also some links to demographic data. Um and uh the Fair Rep L A Coalition last year put together uh a tutorial for you to draw new redistricting maps. Uh for the city of Los Angeles, it's a free free app you can use. It's a little bit wonkier than the. Uh and clunky than the one that you might have used a couple of years ago for the city redistricting commission. But it does allow you to have new district lines as the overlay. Um instead of the ones from twelve plus years ago, they're outdated. And it also allows you to draw district lines for a larger city council. And one idea I'll just throw out there is uh. Because the city could come to an agreement with Rob Bonta, they could maybe say, hey, look, we don't wanna do redistricting right now. We're doing a charter commission. And we don't wanna do another redraw with fifteen districts. We'll wait until twenty twenty eight and we'll do it with the larger city council after go under the voters. Um that that could be a way that we we have a a different outcome, but um. There are some questions in the chat, so I I wanted to pause here. Um why now? Uh that's that's a very good question. Uh it would have been very nice if Rob Bonta spoke up a a year ago. When council expansion was on the ropes, we we could have had a a whole lot of fuel thrown into that fire. Uh and and forcing our council members to take the issue of council expansion seriously with some urgency and getting it on this ballot. Uh that would put us in a different position entirely. Um I it it who knows exactly why now? Uh why not wait until charter reform? We will likely get more districts and potentially cut, yes, uh would love to see that. And um that that one hypothetical I threw out there is is really our our only potential out of it there. Um and our council members are reluctant to do expansion. Uh but maybe if they view this as a less painful way to uh redraw the lines, they they will be more. Uh open minded about it. Do I believe that the stated reason for the challenge is the real reason? I I don't know if anybody has other thoughts on this, uh please feel free to speak up. I think uh. It's it's interesting. We we have, we had a a bit of an undercount in the last census because of COVID and because of the meddling of the Trump administration. So that that inherently pulled down what some of our perspective was on Latino representation in those those districts. Uh it it seems as though there's been some sort of population shift since then, and that relies on A C S data. That that it it. It's a it's a little weird because the the previous commission map was pointed to as like a a Latino district. When it was really only like around forty one point five percent uh Latino citizen voting age population. And I I don't think the 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 way they drew the lines in districts one and fourteen. They they there were different impacts there, the way they they messed with populations where on net. Council District fourteen got a little bit more Latino, like slightly than it used to be. And and only marginally did district one lose a little Latino population. And there's been like this perception that like there was no um attempt to. Undermine the African American community when like district ten did lose a little bit of African American population and had this uh Koreatown United within it. And that was something that if Mark Ridley Thomas were not convicted, the word was that he was gonna undo that. He was not happy with what the commission did. So there's some things that that Nury Martinez and Gil Cidio. And Kevin DeLion did not have to do because the commission did it for them at their behest. So it that's that's an issue that we ran into ten years prior when there was a legal challenge to our maps. Because Herb Wesson uh was arguing about district lines. Apparently somebody on his staff said that like we we don't want more Mexicans in our district. And because they were worried about how this would dilute black power. So. Part of the issue there legally was whether or not that was an issue. Because the commission ultimately made that decision and not the elected officials. So some of this stuff legally speaking, I there might be a reason that some things were not presented and I I don't know, we'll have to see the whole report. And and this is a weird area of the law and and a changing one. So um. Wanted to just pause there and see if there were other questions or or thoughts on this. Oh, we we are all on the ride and and we will see see what comes. Uh Ross, if you can bring us uh over to the the next slide and and take it over.
Absolutely. Thanks for wrapping us up with that very uh hot, brand new redistricting news. Rob, um hi everyone, I'm Ross and just as we launch into the issues that are going to be on everyone's ballot. It is worthwhile to just quickly drop a few links for you all, including making sure that you are registered to vote if you aren't already. Uh check your registration, make sure everything's in order. Um I myself actually looked through the L A City voter information pamphlet, just to remind myself all the little details of the measures. Um before I even started thinking them through myself, it's surprisingly useful. And there is so much on the ballot this year, as it is every election year. Uh having a sample ballot is especially useful to be able to cross reference if, especially if you want to uh have your sample ballot available. If you're going to vote early or in person. Uh in addition to that, uh while Chris Reel is here with his awesome L A voter guide. Uh there are a number of other outlets that have already dropped their voter guides in the that I'm going to also drop for you in the chat. I'm sure that there will be more on the way before Election Day, but that's a uh just being able to get more information from all of these is a great way to get started. Uh we also have, I want to reference our own How to Follow the Money recording that we did at in our, I believe, September. Uh Unreg L A Open Meeting, which is super useful for showing you how to use the Ethics Commission's uh data portal and other data tools. To see exactly who is spending what uh on what in this election and well, see other official communication information. Uh and finally, if you want to be right on top of all the latest information about what's happening to ballot the ballot returns as they come in. The P D I ballot tracker is absolutely fantastic way to get all the latest demographic information, all the latest details and all the latest races as they come in. And um I'm just going to also link directly the Google form where you can ask for that information to be sent to you from P D I as it comes out. Um but with that, I'm gonna hand it back to you, Rob, to take us away with our first set of measures, starting with measure D D.
So uh we will eventually draw maps in a fair way. Uh thi- this thing is is probably one of the least controversial things out there. Fortunately, uh the, you know, at a state level, they really paved the way with independent redistricting and winning people over. And uh it was a very controversial thing ten plus years ago, but but nowadays, everybody sees the light, especially with the Fed tapes. So what does this do? The basics, we we have the worst of all worlds of redistricting. Uh in our current process, we have an advisory commission and it sounds like, hey, that's better than nothing. And that's actually not the case because it gives the false illusion of independence. And it just forces us to, instead of having our politicians transparently rigging the lines, they're working through proxies to do it. And I I would really just rather them do it in person uh than go through all of the drama and and uh yeah. So what are we looking at? A a truly independent redistricting commission, it roughly models itself off of what. Uh California and L A County have for independent redistricting commissions, so it's not a complete reinvention of the wheel. But uh there are a number of things that this package does that are better than our uh those pro- those uh examples. And there are some ways that it's maybe a little bit lesser. Uh one way that it is great is that it is not limited to citizens or voters. Uh it is uh, you know, tailored to the question of whether or not someone has been a city resident for the five years prior to their application. Um so for our current commissions, they just have to be a resident of a a registered voter in the city of L A. Um and uh thi- this would open things up uh for the first time for the city of L A to non-citizens. Um when it comes to representation, you represent the entire district, whether or not they are a voter. So uh thi- this is uh one thing that is unique about this commission. Uh they are chosen through a two-step process that is very, very similar to what the state does. Uh the effort there is to say, let's in the beginning have a random batch of commissioners chosen. So we're starting out with a random group. Um we're drawing ping pong balls. And then in the second stage, we're gonna look at those remaining people in the pool. And we're gonna say, hey, do we have enough folks from the valley in here? Uh do we have people that have, you know, uh Voting Rights Act experience? Or do we have enough young people? Or do we have an overrepresentation of a certain community or whatever it is? Um it allows them to to have that balance in the the commission itself. Uh there are a number of screeners in here to ensure that lobbyists, uh major donors, uh consultants. Uh s- city employees, those that worked in the last couple of years, the city employees or commissioners. Um all kinds of people, uh the spouses of elected officials, anybody that's worked on a political campaign in the last ten years. Like it's it's a huge, long list to ensure that this is a truly independent commission. Um the elected officials would have no role at all in the map making process. They would be stuck like us, giving public comment. Uh and they actually debated in a little, for a little stretch in here, Bob Blumenfield wanted the elected officials to have a special time at the beginning. So they could speak and maybe give them a little extra time like the neighborhood councils get. Uh fortunately, we were able to beat them back on that and that was not included in the final package. Um and this this commission does take some extra steps to increase accessibility. They they are uh supposed to have remote comment at all of the meetings. By default, they will have Spanish translation at all of the meetings. Uh there's some enhanced notice requirements, there there's uh it's it's gonna be different from your average show at L A City Hall. So that is a a good thing and and took a little bit of pressure, but that is uh definitely a positive aspect of this one. Uh moving on to just kind of run you through the the process. Uh the big first chunk, and this takes a lot of time, is the creation of the commission. Because you have to put out an application, you have to get hundreds of, sometimes thousands of people to apply. Uh so that you can actually get a diverse representative pool of people that are uh qualified to serve on the commission. Um the city clerk would oversee the uh or administer and manage the commission creation process. Uh but they would do that in a in an administrative way and the the Ethics Commission would be calling the shots. And and supervising and making big decisions. The city clerk, uh they're gonna receive the applications and look through to make sure that people meet the objective criteria. And what does that mean? Uh that is just the straightforward. Information that is not subject to interpretation. It might require some some fact checking a- and researching to see if they actually did donate too much money. Um you know, making sure that they they just have the basic bare essentials that check the box. So that's gonna be going from a big pool to a a slightly smaller pool, pulling out all of the people that aren't qualified. Um and then the Ethics Commission is gonna go through there and and the public is gonna have an opportunity to flag people. And they are gonna go through and hear challenges. Uh if there's a, you know, objection to somebody being in that pool of applicants, they'll be taken out if the Ethics Commission chooses to. Uh then we're gonna divide the city into eight regions, we're gonna randomly select one commissioner from each of those regions. And then they will assemble and they will begin having meetings. And then they will look at that big pool of people that are remaining and choose the next eight commissioners, bringing us to a total of sixteen. And then we will also have them choose four alternate commissioners. Um there will be a complete ban on off the record communications. So in that, that doesn't just apply to the elected officials and the staff, that applies to everybody. So these commissioners are not supposed to talk about line drawing with anybody unless it's at a public meeting from the public. Um so thi- thi- this is something that's designed to ensure that. Everybody's communicating in the same way, whether it be at a meeting or via written comment or whatever. Um city council has no a role in the approval, you know, somebody could still mount a legal challenge. And uh if the public were angry enough, they could also try to uh do a referendum and gather enough signatures to put it on the ballot, whether or not we wanna keep the maps. These commissioners would be serving for ten years and, you know, we do redistricting every ten years, but there is work in between then. Um not necessarily uh gonna keep them as occupied, but there is work that is ongoing in case there is a legal challenge. Uh and we are in a situation like this, like that that is the beauty. If we were in a world where we already had independent redistricting, thi- this is what the solution would be. We we would already have a commission in place that had previously drawn the lines. So i- it would not be this long drawn out process. That is the beauty of a ten-year commission. Um the the uh there is a way to change the redistricting process, uh you know, without changing the charter. If it's something that conflicts with the charter, you can't do it. You gotta change it via the charter. But if it is within the charter, um that the independent redistricting commission uh would have to be the one recommending the change. The Ethics Commission would have to approve it and and then the council would have an up or down vote. So the council would not be able to rewrite proposals and they would be stuck with an up or down vote. And there are a few checks in there to make sure that nothing gets weird as far as future changes, so there is some built in protection. Uh if we can go to the next slide, Ross. Some of the weaknesses, and I don't wanna over emphasize this, this is something that you should absolutely. Some of the weaknesses, and I don't want to overemphasize this, this is something that you should absolutely certainly vote for. We might be a bit nitpicky from like a policy perspective and really wanting to look at like the best, strongest reforms. This is so that, you know, you can really evaluate what this proposal is like compared to some other places. Identify potential weaknesses so that they could maybe be fixed in the charter reform process that's coming up. Or some of them just require, you know, different levers to be pulled in responses and advocacy in the process as it unfolds. So it doesn't require an actual change. It just means that we need to be ready in, in a, you know, a number of years when this actually happens to ensure it goes right. One of those issues is there's not a complete firewall on influence from elected officials. There are some ways they can indirectly influence things. And we, we push strongly a number of advocates for the commission to be given outside counsel and that is their lawyer and they do not use the city attorney as a lawyer. This is not something the council was willing to do. They, they settled on this language that says the commission may utilize the city attorney as legal counsel or may request the city attorney to retain legal counsel for the commission. So they, they can ask the city attorney to let them hire outside counsel, but like they, they don't have the, the clear authority to just trust outside counsel. So ultimately, the city attorney is going to have some degree of influence. And if we are in a situation like we, we saw with the redistricting commission for LAUSD a couple of years ago, there was a big Voting Rights Act question that came up. And it fostered serious debate amongst the commissioners and it happened behind closed doors. So the city attorney, what the city attorney or attorney general, what they think about what is or isn't legal can be very important. And what we hear and don't hear and how certain conversations can go, how we interpret certain aspects of the charter. And there are some areas to this charter where the language is subject to interpretation and, and who our elected official is in that office can change and that can be for better or worse. So the other really big, you know, flaw, I think that you have here, you know, for LA County, for the state of California, they have outside counsel. For the state of California, they have a protected budget. There's a minimum that they have to be given and it's tied to inflation. They can be given more money, but there's a minimum. We saw in the redistricting process a couple of years ago, the city council drawing out dispersal of funds, which undermined the commission's ability to do an outreach plan. And actually have Spanish translation at all of their meetings early enough and actually have a robust, you know, it just really, really undermined things and it forced advocates to distract themselves with begging for them to get money. And it, 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 it was just a huge problem. And after Paul Krikorian ended up not liking the maps, what did he do? He introduced a motion asking for a report back on how they spent their money to make sure there wasn't any waste or fraud or whatever. With a 10-year commission, you don't want to have your commissioners worried that if they draw the maps a certain way with the council president or with the budget chair, that they're not going to be able to get money in the future for what they're doing. That's just not something we want to see. And we've seen that with the Ethics Commission, the way that, you know, that, that can be wielded through threat or just understanding as a, as a, you know, you don't bite the hand that he feeds you. So those are the two really big ones. We can fight for a stronger independent budget. Maybe that's something in the charter reform process that gets addressed. You know, we could pick a number tied to inflation or something I think should be explored is, is setting up a independent, you know, entity to, to have budgets for independent entities. For whether that be for redistricting, the city data bureau, which is something new proposed, or the city ethics commission. Just having some sort of independent way of, of getting a reasonable budget that does not hinge on political officials' approval. Another challenge is that, you know, most commissions for California have their, their screening entity, whether that be the Ethics Commission or a panel of judges or academics or whatever. They have them, you know, evaluate the big pool and make, put it into a very small list. And that's usually anywhere from like 30 to 60 people. We didn't want to go that route as a city because that tends to produce a really elite crop of applicants that are overrepresented by lawyers and academics. So you don't actually get average people on the commission. So there was a really intentional effort to avoid that. So they were originally looking at a large pool in the, the hundreds and then they got rid of it entirely. So we're not going to be narrowing to a, a, a small pool. That is good in some ways. You remove the discretion issue, but it is flawed in some ways because you're, you're not going to allow them to balance things out. You know, usually when the commission is trying to come up with the 30 or 60 most qualified applicants that represent, you know, geographic diversity, they're looking for, you know, screening things out from a, some sort of measure. Here, there, you're not going to have that. So you're just going to end up with a very, very large pool that might end up being naturally, if you look at voting records, you know, you're more likely to vote if you're wider, wealthier, older. And, and that's probably going to be the case for application responses. So I worry that you might not have a very diverse pool that you're drawing that first random batch from. You can balance it out later, but this does present some challenges. And it presents some challenges when they're picking their next eight commissioners, because instead of them sifting through 50, 60 applications and closely reading them, they're going to have hundreds of applications. And they're going to have to say like, all right, this person takes home 50 of these applications and you take home 50 and you all come back and come up with some that you think we should take. So it's going to be very weird to manage and, and a little new and there are pros and cons to that. The other issue is I really just don't like having the Ethics Commission in a position of hearing objections on an individual basis. And I worry that this could be abused. We've seen commission appointments become a bit more controversial at City Hall, to say the least. So I, I worry that some, some, you know, potentially elected officials or their advocates or interest groups might say, we're going to flag a bunch of names, like anybody that we just think is weird and force the Ethics Commission to weigh in on that. And I think that could be very weird for the Ethics Commission to ultimately respond to that stuff. That could be, you know, done in a different way. There is a door opened in the proposal to the Ethics Commission delegating their authority. So they could have an independent screening panel do that, that they set up through a different process to be determined. So those are some larger weaknesses, some smaller ones. And we've got a lot to go to and this is taking a bit, so I, I want to make sure we can run through and if there are any questions, please feel free to also just DM about it, but weaknesses, the, the power of the alternates is left undetermined. They don't decide whether, they intentionally did not indicate whether the alternates can speak or not at the meetings or whether or not they can vote. And I think that's unfortunate because that could lead to some controversy and leaves you with a very different situation to have four more people speaking on a large panel. And 20 people is a lot. 21 was a lot of commissioners and I, I, there's some unpredictability with that. There were some tweaks that were made by the council that increased the residency requirement from three years to five, which I didn't love. There was also a reduction in the revolving door restrictions for former city employees and commissioners. Previously, it was set to be four years that they had to be removed and instead they changed it to two. Mark Wieser as Dawson had some language inserted in there regarding economic assets. That was a huge debate from the last process and understandable, but it does kind of complicate the line drawing process and what you consider. There is no minimum stipend for the commissioners. They, they say that we're going to create commissioner compensation later, but don't indicate how other than it would be via ordinance. And that's, that's an issue because redistricting takes a lot of time. And part of the reason that you end up with those elite groups is because average people can't take the time away from work to volunteer their time for no pay to just devote enormous time to a venture like this. So having some sort of compensation for the California commission, it's $300 a meeting. For some commissions, they give them, you know, I think Michigan, it was 25,000 annual salary. So there are different models that different places go with. There's a numbering system that, that is based off of what Long Beach uses and when that was implemented for, for their city, there was a debate early on about how to interpret that. And there was some outside counsel for the city that was saying that, you know, it should be interpreted one way. And some folks found that that might reinforce incumbency protection and ultimately they backed down, but we, we will see how that plays out. And another issue that, that could be relevant for our city council right now is we have strict fundraising windows. So if you're raising money starting in December, if Hugo Soto Martinez starts raising money for city council and he gets drawn out of District 13, he has the, the option of moving. If he wants to stay in District 13 or he has to, you know, it, there's really aren't a lot of options if he wants to keep that campaign account other than moving. If he wanted to run in a new district that he was drawn into, he would have to transfer that and you can't do that in the city of LA. So he just has to return all of the money and ask for people to donate to his new campaign. We, we had pushed for, for that flexibility to be included in there, a one-time transfer if somebody's drawn out of their district, but they didn't want to mess with that. So those are some of the weaknesses. Ross, if we can go to the next slide. And that, that is it for city council redistricting. And I think overall, like you should have no reservations at all about voting for this thing. Just that we, we might be redrawing the line soon. And eventually it's going to come. So there, there are definitely some things we got to be wary of and make sure people are vigilant about.
And Rob, I don't know if you wanted to answer any other questions about the
I found the process of choosing the We Draw the Lines Commission to be political, quite political, even though it's supposed to be apolitical. So I feel very worried to hear about this effort to construct a nonpartisan commission. Is that even possible? It's not necessarily like an effort to have a nonpartisan commission. There, there will be partisans on it. It's, it's intended to have balance of like all ideologies across the board. Hopefully they're, they're not, you know, working against each other. The, it's, it's very important for commissions to be able to agree on things and find some sort of compromise. The, the flag about We Draw the Lines, it depends on, on what. I, I would, I would say that there, there's some pros and cons. If you, there was some LA County had a very tight restriction that said that you, you couldn't have a firm that does certain work or is related to people who do certain work. So Paul Mitchell and We Draw the Lines, Redistricting Partners could not draw the lines for LA County. They were screened out. But it's very hard to find people to do that work. So ultimately, LA County had a hard time finding a vendor and they were choosing between an organization that represented questionable groups that did some very racist gerrymandering in other parts of the country. And a firm that had zero experience with Los Angeles. So if you want people who know the city, the jurisdiction, you can't be too, you know, tight on that. I think the most important thing is not necessarily that the staff or the person drawing the lines when it comes to independence, it's really important with the commissioners because they're the ones making the decisions. And I, it's, it's a, it's a balancing act there. And I, it's it's not perfect. It's, it's a lot messier. We, we had the benefit with the Fed tapes of seeing the messiness of redistricting as it was like spoken amongst them in like their rawest form. But like, we usually don't get that kind of insight. And if you watched the LA County and the state redistricting commissions, because there are people that are really trying to hear out all of these different communities and all of these different perspectives on both sides, they can end up having very, you know, serious debates. And there are some people who might say that because it's the state of California, like they're, they're always going to have the Dems winning things out. But like, they, they have a strict setup for the state commission on partisan basis where they guarantee, you know, appropriate representation of all parties and non-partisans. So we don't have anything in here that, that specifically has partisan requirements. But it, it does say that they are supposed to, you know, be nonpartisan and, and represent the ideological diversity of the city. Ross, LAUSD.
Okay, I will take it away with yes, just a very briefly going over a few of these this grab bag of measures. The next is of course Measure LL regarding an independent redistricting commission for LAUSD. And you might ask yourself, well, this is just Measure MM, copy paste it onto LAUSD. But the reality is that this is still incredibly important. LAUSD is the second largest public school district in the nation. The budget is a whopping 18.4 billion. They, this board decides who hires the superintendent, who sets the policy. The borders of the board districts are themselves significant. It's a little bit more tricky because they have to encompass groups of students equally, not just groups of people. And also even though LAUSD covers students outside of the official city of LA, ultimately, the final decision about who is and isn't on this board does, and how the districts are drawn rests with City Hall. So very basically, Measure LL does create an independent redistricting commission with the full drop map drawing authority, all the different ethical perks that are, Rob just went into detail on for the city as a whole. But there are some unique kinks. For instance, this creates four seats that are reserved for parents of LAUSD students. But the debates around education and education policy regarding public versus private versus charter schools, while these seats don't have to be for parents with students in public LAUSD schools, it can also be for students in charter schools, in private schools. There is also, there was some discussion in this measure about whether or not there would be a requirement to have youth participation on this board, on this redistricting commit, commission, but ultimately in part due to some concerns about exactly what limits state law might have. That was just ended up in the measure as something that just might be provided. Regardless, it is still a substantial step forward to be able to say that this very powerful board and its districts are going to now be determined much more independently. And I think for me, at least personally, this was another strong yes vote. And yes, Sarah also notes, it's the largest publicly elected board district as well.
I would just add that like the status quo for LAUSD is actually the real world worst of all worlds. Because they have a sham of a commission that the elected officials control from behind the scenes. And then when it gets to the full council, none of the elected officials want to sacrifice any of their political capital to, to help out the kids. So like, there, there was, like, by the time it was there, like, nobody wanted to do anything to change the maps. And there were no changes, even though people were still mad. So you just have very little influence and you have city council people deciding LAUSD maps when there's 750,000 people who live in LAUSD but have no ability to vote for the person who, any of the people who will be drawing the lines. So the LAUSD setup is like the absolute worst.
And moving along to our next measure. So I sat in on the Governance Reform Committee meeting at City Hall where all of these, these different, very minor rule changes and rewritten parts of the charter were, of the city charter were discussed. And they do have to go in front of the voters in order for these changes to the charter to be made. But even though they see these governance rule changes to the charter might seem like they are minor edits, they can still be very substantial. For instance, this Measure HH, among many other things, clarifies that RCD Controller absolutely very explicitly does, their auditing powers do extend to cover contractors and subcontractors. That's especially significant when RS- That's especially significant when RSD Controller is recently, it needs to audit, investigate, have access to financial records for contractors and subcontractors who are taking city funds. Does something important in the way of clarifying subpoena powers of the city attorney, including importantly clarifying that those powers do not and cannot apply to investigations of city employees, which is especially important for potential retaliation by the city attorney's office against city employees. Even small minor details like whether or not referenda petitions can be withdrawn by the person proposing them. This can save a lot of legal heartache and potential frustration trying to figure out just how a particular political process works in the city. We are about to talk about ethics in just a moment. We need to cover Measure ER. But requiring explicitly that there is a legal necessity that if you are appointed to a city commission or a board, you have to file your financial disclosure forms before you can be confirmed. That's substantial. And it is a good thing, actually, that, for instance, a member of the Harbor Commissioner has to be from, to have to be from the local areas around the harbor, among many other very small language cleanup issues. No real weaknesses to speak up here, just because these are so minor, but they are still important. And both HH and Measure II, which focuses on city departments, seem like yes votes to me personally, doing things like adding explicitly in the charter protections for city hiring in regards to gender identity, gender expression makes clear that, hey, if you're, for instance, at the Greek Theater, a city department can potentially sell merchandise or food if that's relevant to its work. But another just minor cleanup in the details of which powers the departments have according to our city charter. Again, saves everyone a lot of legal time and heartache trying to, and headache, trying to figure out exactly who does what, when. And unless there are any other questions about HH and II, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Jamie for Measure ER.
Hi, I'm going to be talking a little bit about the Ethics Reform Measure. So this is really the first substantial change to the Ethics Commission that we've had since its introduction in the nineties. I want to go over a couple of of the good things about it, but I also want to go over some of the weaknesses and some of the things that will be missing. I I do want to encourage everyone to vote for it. But it is, in my opinion, a sad shadow of what it could have been. So if we could go to the the next slide. Most importantly, it is tripling. Yeah, it's tripling the fines. Our fines have been pegged at five thousand dollars since the nineties. This is going to triple those fines to fifteen thousand per violation and it's also going to tie increases to the fines to inflation. The Ethics Commission typically offers for cooperation a fifty percent reduction, which has made a lot of these fines relatively toothless in terms of, you know, players that have big money that see this as more of a an annoyance than an actual real fine. There is another part of the rule that can also be three times the amount of money that's involved. That's not going away, but this does allow like the flat statutory fine to be massively increased and to to keep pace. So we won't be in this situation again. It's also going to give the Ethics Commission a minimum seven million dollar budget. And you might ask why this is important. Some of you might remember from a few years ago, there was an article in the L.A. Times where an Ethics Commission employee reported that a council member or a staffer of a council member basically said like, hey, you need to go easier on your gift advice or we're going to come after your budget. So by having a protected minimum budget, this will help protect the Ethics Commission from those kinds of pressures. It's also going to establish an outside council fund for special investigations or enforcement. It's going to go up to five hundred thousand dollars, but that's inclusive within that seven million. And it's going to be in particular for cases involving the city attorney's office or for special investigations. It also has that council must hear proposals within one hundred and eighty days. The trend has been for council to often sit on proposals from the Ethics Commission and simply not hear them. This has happened with the municipal lobbying ordinance. This has happened. There's a current proposal to have L.A. City Council members have to file the same disclosure forms for conflict of interest that commissioners currently have to file. And that has just sat, they haven't done anything with it. So this would help prevent these recommendations from the Ethics Commission just to sit. There also are going to be prohibitions on who can serve as commissioners. Importantly, it's going to exclude major donors, those who are contractors with the city as to sort of big examples of who who will not be able to serve as commissioners and also folks that are employed by campaigns. If we can go to the next slide. But there's some caveats. The the city council made it so that the Ethics Commission really wanted the ability to take proposals directly to the voters on ethics-related items because of this problem of of letting things sit. But there's nothing in what city council is proposing that will obligate them to do more than have a hearing, which could mean all they'd have to do is note and file the motion from the commission and that's the hearing. It does not require them to have substantive discussion. It does not require them to actually move on anything. They just have to schedule it. That's not, that's not, you know, it it's a way of of creating a look towards movement, but not actual accountability. They also nixed the idea of the independent appointment of commissioners. There was a proposal for two independently appointed commissioners appointed by the Ethics Commission. Right now, all of our ethics commissioners are political appointees, one from the mayor, one from the city attorney, one from the city controller, one from the council president, and one from the council pocham. So this would allow there to be a little bit more of diversity of voices within the Ethics Commission. That was also nixed. And, you know, with within the minimum budget, it really is essentially locking in the status quo. It is not a big increase and it doesn't increase with the expanded responsibilities that they're going to have, particularly with the the responsibilities of picking commissioners for the independent redistricting. And so there's also a mechanism that allows city council to mess with their budget in in times of essentially fiscal uncertainty, but that hasn't been operationally defined. And so there's a lot of question as to what that will mean moving forward in terms of the city council's ability to meddle. Will it require a fiscal emergency? Will it simply require them saying revenues are lower? We don't know because they haven't defined it. And then the last thing that I wanted to say is that with the prohibition on who can serve as commissioners, it would treat people the same as if they were a big time consultant making thousands of dollars, the same as somebody who might get paid, you know, five hundred dollars to go and do knocking on, door knocking. And those are really not inherently the same role. So just another thing to flag on how that impacts people that are at very disparate levels of involvement with campaigning. So you should vote for it, but it is really watered down. And also, the Ethics Commission really wanted the ability to recoup the the cost of investigations. Because one of the ways right now that especially richer folks fight these cases to have them tied up in court, John Lee is currently doing that right now. And that, you know, if there was a ability for, an ability for them to recoup their legal fees, that might help people come to the table more in good faith. But that was also knocked down as well by city council. That's it.
I'm going to talk about Measure FF, which is the L.A. Fire and Police Pensions measure, which would allow basically a few hundred L.A. police officers who work at airports, the harbor, or Parks Department to transfer their pensions from L.A. City Employees Retirement System. This abbreviated as LASERS to the L.A. Fire and Police Pension Plan. L.A. City would cover the one hundred and ten million dollars in associated costs, including refunds to certain officers for prior transfers. That would include a one-time payment of twenty-three million dollars from the city's general fund plus an estimated one million dollars annually for payroll costs. The rest of those costs would be covered by the airport and harbor revenue, harbor revenue funds. And the measure is supported by Karen Bass, Parker Corey, and Tracy Park, and John Lee, and opposed by me. I think you should vote no. I don't believe Measure FF justifies spending one hundred and ten million dollars on pension transfers. It's pretty straightforward. Next slide. This one's also pretty quick and easy, the L.A. USD Safety and Upgrades Measure US. It was introduced by the L.A. USD Board of Education. Basically, eighty percent of L.A. USD public schools opened over fifty years ago and twenty percent of them are over a hundred years old. We have a lot of crumbling infrastructure and health and safety hazards. Basically, US requires a fifty-five percent voter approval to allow a nine billion dollar school facilities repairs and upgrades bond measure. That would do things like update classroom technology, even just like old computers and create lab facilities. Would address a lot of health and safety hazards, like we still have asbestos and all this mild stuff in our schools. And also it would create more outdoor learning spaces. And there are measures for independent oversight. I support this. I think we should invest in public schools. Next slide. County Measure A is the homelessness services and affordable housing measure from L.A. County. It would repeal and replace twenty seventeen's County Measure H, which increased sales tax in L.A. County by point zero two five percent. So just to explain that, that's twenty-five cents on a hundred dollars worth of purchase. And that revenue was for homeless services and housing. Since twenty seventeen, revenue from Measure H has housed over forty-two thousand people and prevented an additional ten thousand from losing housing. The Measure H tax is set to expire in twenty twenty-seven. Unfortunately, the unhoused population in L.A. County has increased thirty-seven percent since twenty seventeen. For every one hundred people who are housed, an additional one hundred and twenty lose housing and become unhoused. Next slide. Measure A increases sales tax an additional point zero two five percent. So that would be in total point oh five percent. It doesn't apply to essential items like gas, groceries, rent, medication, diapers, EBT purchases. And supporters of the measure say this would come out to an average household paying an extra five dollars a month in taxes. So essentially doubling the tax, Measure A would generate an estimated one point oh eight billion dollars annually. And in addition to the types of things that Measure H covered, like rental assistance, social services, mental health and substance use treatment and shelters, this additional revenue for Measure A would go to fund the development of affordable housing. Measure A also includes a loss of housing prevention strategy, which Measure H did not have, and that would include more funding for eviction prevention programs. So, for example, older adults are the fastest growing population of unhoused people because many of them are on fixed income and can't keep up with rent. Funding from Measure A would create targeted programs that help people who might be a few hundred dollars short. And that's a much better investment because it costs so much money to try to rehouse people once they're unhoused. Measure A also defines goals specifically to reduce homelessness, keep people permanently housed, and prevent loss of housing. I just want to say one thing that I really like about Measure A is that it specifies permanent housing. A growing number of elected officials have been putting an emphasis on beds and interim housing, which is the euphemism euphemism for shelter. Generally, housing someone is actually much cheaper than just sheltering them, mostly due to administrative and staffing costs. But elected officials a lot of the time like shelters because they're a quick fix to get people inside. But they're really an ineffective solution long term because they just are not housing. Measure A mandates data collection from every program that receives funding and it standardizes the type of data that it collects, which is an important change. There has not been a ton of data and transparency around Measure H spending. Measure A tracks progress on these goals that are established. And it gives some flexibility to remove funding from underperforming programs. I have some issues with Measure H, which I'll get into on the next slide. But if funding expires, thousands would lose housing and the county estimates the that unsheltered homelessness would increase by twenty-eight percent. Some weaknesses. So like I said, this is a sales tax. Obviously, I don't think we should be taxing people equally when we have a bunch of billionaires who live in this county. Supporters of Measure A say a single source of funding makes it easier to administer these funds to various programs. The executive committee that Measure A would establish to oversee a big part of the funding includes the L.A. Mayor and two county supervisors, which I think is a problem because there have been some serious transparency issues with Mayor Bass's InsightSafe program, including missing transparency reports and her office dragging their feet on releasing invoices for months after a federal judge ordered her to. And then also Measure A establishes which types of programs funding has to be allocated to, which is a good thing, but public officials still have a pretty decent level of discretion about how to change the program, including how to allocate aspects of funding based on periodic review of program goals. And that's it.
One of the more interesting adventures, how are people planning on voting on it? I'm I'm undecided. I somewhat comforted that like money's not immediately running out. But I'll probably vote for it just because I don't want to see shit hit the fan, but I don't know.
Sort of my rationale for it is that you know, if if Measure A doesn't pass, there are still a couple more years to pass something else. I don't really think we're going to get anything better than this. One thing that I didn't mention is a percentage of funding also goes to cities and unincorporated L.A. County in sort of a separate fund. And based on what I read from the measure's text, I don't think there is as much oversight on that funding and that is a concern for me.
I'm currently leaning lightly no. And I think it's in large part because I've been, I've I've become really disillusioned with the oversight that at the city and county level that's put into place over these kinds of funds. In in particular, like you see with like ULA, right? But the commission that oversees the spending is entirely appointed by the mayor. And then the mayor can pull those commissioners at at any time with an, with an undated letter of resignation if they're not sort of going along with the status quo. For me, given that it is a doubling of the taxes, I do wish that there was a more significant oversight mechanism that was more independent and more forcefully public facing. And that, like, I'm glad the money's not immediately expiring because I think that there's a lot of people that aren't going to vote yes on this, but for me, I would need to see, to feel better about this, I would need to see more independent oversight and and more transparency to the public included as a as a priority. But that's that's, I'm still undecided, but I'm lightly towards no right now.
And I know I share personally Jamie's concerns regarding oversight. Simply saying there will be oversight doesn't mean there will be meaningful transparency, accountability in practice. That being said, I'm concerned about the continuity of funding and ensuring that as plans are made for the long term, that funding is still available. But I think anyone with concerns, anyone who wants to make sure that ethics and accountability really be advocated for. But I think anyone with concerns, anyone who wants to make sure that ethics and accountability really be advocated for can and should have their say on this issue.
I I would say the only reason I'm like considering voting for it is because of Measure G, which is the next thing we'll talk about because I have no faith in the ethics or ability of a five-headed monster to govern ten million people.
But do you have faith in a nine-headed monster, Rob? That's just one supervisor for every million person, right?
I might like more than nine, but I am happy to see us move from the nine-headed monster to also have at least one person who's supposed to be in charge.
That would be nice. And yes, you just mentioned we might have a county executive in twenty twenty-eight and they should be on that committee. But we're taught this, we're talking about County Measure G in the context of the Board of Supervisors for the ten million people of LA County expanding. But when I went to title this, I just called it Reform Overhaul because there is a lot more to this particular measure than just expanding the board in ways that are sometimes interesting and sometimes good ways, sometimes just interesting ways. And I'm just going to frame what Measure G is proposing to do in terms of timeline because some of what it's doing will not actually take effect for until years from now. And that being said, if Measure G passes, there are a number of different process reforms. First of all, there will be a Charter Review Commission every ten years as there is going to be at the city level. Creates a new reform task force, continue to talk through these issues. Extends the lobbying ban on ex-county employees from one to two years, which feels like a bare minimum bar to clear, as well as requiring department budgets be presented in open meetings. Requires that any legislation be posted for a full five days before the Board of Supervisors can take action on it. So far, so good. But also not too meaningful. By twenty twenty-six, a Ethics Commission and Office of Ethics Compliance are meant to be created. And then the big new positions in elected county executives is supposed to be created by twenty twenty-eight as well as to assist that county executive in their budget proposal duties, a legislative analyst position and a director of budget and management. And finally, the grand hurrah in twenty thirty-two, a full six years from now. Nope, gosh, eight. A additional seven supervisors will be elected for a total of nine supervisors after a redistricting immediately following the twenty thirty census. And while obviously expanding the 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 board from five to nine is a direction, move in the right direction in terms of representation. There are a number of lingering questions about exactly what G will be doing, Measure G will be doing and why. Simply because the devil is in the details or rather lack thereof. Oftentimes, as I was going through different news articles covering Measure G, says that Measure G will create an independent Ethics Commission. But the question is, how independent? Will it have a protected budget? Exactly what are going to be the structures and details of this Ethics Commission? Those are going to be left to a future ordinance because this measure was moved forward so quickly. And that also means its protections will not be enshrined in the charter. And of course, the response to this has just been to say, well, we can always go back to the charter and enshrine these again with yet another vote. But it does bring up a layering question that questions that persist into the issue of the details of how these new supervisor offices will actually be funded, how they will be budgeted for. Measure G does state that additional costs from the taxpayer will not be incurred for these new supervisor offices, but that still doesn't get to the question of how much they're going to, exactly how that will be done and funding is potentially a real concern. And I think all of this does justify concerns raised by the board, specifically supervisors Holly Mitchell and Catherine Berger about just why exactly certain choices were made. Why is the number going from five to nine rather than another number? Why exactly don't we have more details now rather than waiting until later? Now, that being said, the issue of whether or not the Board of Supervisors is to be expanded has been discussed literally for almost a hundred years since it was first proposed in nineteen twenty-six. I don't know if anyone watched, took the time to watch the riveting Board of Supervisors discussion, but Janice Han busted out a video of her dad in the nineteen seventies banging on the Board of Supervisors desk, saying, we must expand the council now. It is understandable to say that, well, at some point, some change does need to happen. And this is a series of changes that feel hugely in the right direction. But I think people who do have concerns or want to better understand why choices are made in, it feels like a very short period of time. Those questions are justified and important questions to be asking right now. But that being said, I personally support a Measure G yes vote, but open to hearing other thoughts.
And I just wanted to add a few things, just some, some of the controversies, there's been some pushback from some of the supervisors, some people who have concerns about this measure. As Ross said, like the independence question is is left very much to be determined and the board at least seems to realize this now that there was a confidential report calling that into question. So they they would likely have to come back to the ballot to enshrine some of the independence of the commission in there. There, there's a claim that the the new executive would have the ability, they they would be able to unilaterally veto things. And that's not, not the case. They they can veto things, but the board still has the ability to override it with two-thirds vote. So six out of nine, that is not that that crazy. They can hold the executive in check. And and I think there is some beauty in having one person to blame for all of your problems. That's kind of one thing that we get to enjoy with our mayor. There, there's also a question been thrown out there, like, why aren't there term limits? And the the answer to that is that because of state law, we're actually barred from having term limits for any of our countywide elected officials. So just like the DA and the sheriff do not have term limits, we can't do that for the executive unless the state changes the law. So this would not take effect till twenty twenty-eight. They would still have time to go to the state legislature to say, hey, we want to be able to have time, we want to have the ability to do term limits for this position. There's also been this claim that like we're politicizing the the CEO, the and that's not really the case. There, there would still be somebody that does the job of the CEO. It has a new name that Ross mentioned and it would be appointed by the executive with the confirmation of the board. And that is the same setup we have with our city council where there is somebody who administers the budget and and city governance. There is also a legislative analyst for the city and the board would gain the ability to still have somebody that is responsive to them for their legislative work. So there would still be these neutral-ish positions and checks and balances built into there. The other concern is that we we just a million peoples is a lot and we wouldn't necessarily have super competitive elections. And we need to change the state law so that the county can do public financing of elections like the city of LA so that we actually have more competitive, interesting elections for the county because right now they are not interesting at all. So I I am a big fan of this position. I I will be voting yes, even though I have some gripes about it, mainly because the supervisors have at least committed to going back to the ballot in twenty twenty-six. So I I was won over by that bit. Jamie, Chris, anything to add, thoughts, anyone in the chat? Or anybody have any questions about this one? This is a big one for LA County. And this thing fails, it would really not set things on a good path for the city of LA as it looks at expansion.
I'm going to vote for it, but I I I'm a big fan of the the phrase that you shouldn't be like building the plane while you're trying to fly it. And this feels a little bit like that to me. At least with the Ethics Commission part. So, but I I agree that it's a step in the right direction.
I agree with Jamie and I also think the sort of lack of transparency about what is going to happen is a little bit of a weird way to introduce this measure to voters.
It was a horrible process. Made the city like, at least they were ambitious and got something really ambitious on the ballot, but process wise, the city did a much better job of trying to measure themselves and there weren't too many surprises, other than wanting to cut council meetings at the last minute. Trying to just check in the chat and see if there's anything there. Just, just some, some thoughts on on how this may or may not be interrelated to the city. All, all very much warranted. I think that's it for LA City, LAUSD and County. And and next we just have some quick hits from Chris on the state. Things to just keep an eye out for and and we are not going deep into them. And I I appreciate Chris, who has far more expertise on the state stuff, just giving us some highlights and and making sure to flag some things.
So Prop two is a ten billion dollar bond for school and community college renovations. I recommend supporting that, sort of like Measure US for LAUSD. Prop three repeals Prop eight, which is the anti-marriage equality prop that enshrines marriage equality in our state constitution. Prop four is a ten billion dollar bond for environmental projects that Gavin Newsom slashed from the state budget. Love that for us. Prop five lowers voter voter approval thresholds on local bond measures for affordable housing and public infrastructure from two-thirds to fifty-five percent, basically. Currently, if a third of people don't want to approve a bond measure, they can hold everyone else hostage, which isn't great. Next slide. Prop six removes language from California's constitution that allows slave labor in prisons. It's basically California's equivalent of the Thirteenth Amendment. If you haven't seen, give a Duvernay's documentary about that, check it out. I also just want to add some states that have removed the that language from their state constitutions. There have been hundreds of reports that forced labor continues in state prisons. Prop thirty-two raises the state minimum wage to eighteen dollars an hour by twenty twenty-six and indexes the minimum wage to inflation with some exceptions. An incremental improvement. Prop thirty-three repeals Costa Hawkins and would allow governments to expand rent control. The misinformation around this measure is really out of control. It will not do anything to prevent rent control and expands local government's ability to do it. Prop thirty-four is a weird retaliation against AIDS Healthcare Foundation and Healthy Housing Foundation for backing Prop thirty-three. It's disguised as a prescription drug provider accountability slash statewide negotiation of medical drug prices measure, which is very strange. LA Public Press has a really good explanation of what the deal is, which is linked to in the slide. Prop thirty-five makes current tax on managed health plans permanent. This is another really complicated one that should have been worked out in the state legislature. Basically, some groups oppose it because it changes who gets funding increases and it restricts the legislator from being able to revise how that funding is used later. And finally, Prop thirty-six reverses two thousand fourteen's Prop forty-seven, which was basically in response to the US Supreme Court saying our prisons were super overcrowded. Prop thirty-six brings back three-strikes laws, enhances retail theft and drug-related crimes to felony charges. Basically a mass incarceration bill. That's all.
I am muted. I I am, I'm back. We, we, we're not going super deep into the Charter Reform Commission, but there are some new appointments. Links are in the slides. Two commissioners were approved, Mona Field and Ted Stein. Mona Field, former president of the League of Women Voters, a really, really great choice for the commission. Ted Stein, somebody super knowledgeable of the city, got into some ethics questionable situations back in his day, but you know, was apparently cleared and and at least has some experience. There are two commissioners from Councilmember Harris Dawson that are awaiting confirmation. They haven't been scheduled yet. Jorge Nuneo, who ran for District Nine and supervisory, supervisory district two. He is notably a consultant for Holly Mitchell and Karen Bass. So if he were consulting and contracting with the city, he would not be eligible for this commission. But he's doing it for her campaign, so it's okay. Weird to have that kind of relationship dynamic, but somebody who who for for most accounts is a, is a, is a good choice. Martin Schlaggader was with Councilmember Weezer's office, currently with the Metropolitan Water District, at least for the Weezer thing. He was not tied up with any of the cannabis rules or planning policy areas and and you know, nothing that anybody should be concerned about from that angle. There are four appointees from Mayor Bass that are missing in action. And we can't get started till we get at least three of them. So that is a big problem and holding us up from getting to that first meeting. They have appointed an executive director, Anna Hofzapian, from Council District Two. She, she's previously worked for Nury Martinez and it would be great to not have an insider, but this is an insider's game as far as knowing the city of Los Angeles and there are very few people that have the expertise and experience to to handle a job like this. And if you just look at, you know, how our redistricting commissions went, you compare the city and LAUSD, the LAUSD one went a lot smoother administratively because they had a competent executive director and this is a tough job. So at least from a staffing expertise perspective, this is somebody who's going to be able to do a solid job from that end. And just like with redistricting, you know, you want competent staff in there. Where you're really concerned is the decision makers, the commissioners and the city council. So as long as the, you have a competent staff, that's, that's the most big important thing. When will the first meeting be? We're still waiting on at least three commissioners so we can get a quorum. They, those first eight will be choosing the next five commissioners, so we will have to have an application process. The first meetings will maybe be happening in the next month or so. And we will hopefully have thirteen people by the end of the year. If it might very well be getting delayed, but depending on what happens with redistricting, we really can't delay things. So any questions about Charter Reform Commission? Mike?
Yeah. Hey, Rob, I I recall on some call previously you thought that the commission would be able to choose its own rules about issues like virtual participation and others. Was, did I hear you correct at that time?
So the the commission is is required by law to present an outreach plan to the city council. So they are required to to come up with a plan for for some of their outreach specifics. But it, you know, they're going to be meeting before they put that plan in front of the council. So we are going to go through some efforts to put together some coalition responses as far as recommendations and try to get those in front of the staff, get them in front of the commissioners so that they they have an idea of what we want to see in there because we would like to see remote public comment at all of these meetings. We would like to see them in the evening and the afternoon. There, there's a lot of things that would be important to making sure that thing's accessible.
Thank you.
Other thoughts, questions on the Charter Reform Commission? It will get interesting soon enough. If you have any pet issues policy-wise, look to to have them tidied up by the end of the year, the start of twenty twenty-five, because the commission will start doing its, its kind of look into the policy end of things around then. And that'll be going on throughout the year. If we can roll over to the next slide. Uh, and that'll be going on throughout the year, um, if we can roll over to the next slide. Um, and, and thank you Lionel, uh, for throwing, uh, some, some info on oppressor tomorrow in support of measure G. This will be a very, 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 very interesting one. Um, I, 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 I curious to see what the actual polling looks like. The polling that Supervisor Horvath put together, um, looked positive, but it's all about presentation. So for campaign finance data, we've got some tidbits for you to digest. Uh, first up, this is the second quarter lobbyist fundraising for the city of Los Angeles. This is money that has been raised by lobbyists or delivered by lobbyists. And this, this shows you just the second quarter of two thousand and twenty-four, and it shows you all of our elected officials. Um, and, uh, shows you the different accounts. So you can have people donating to the campaign account, the office holder account. You know, there's current price raising money for legal defense committee, all kinds of goodies there. Uh, that is something that was included in the lobbying report from the Ethics Commission at their last meeting. Uh, they do a, a, a very thorough dive into things every, uh, quarter roughly. And, uh, this, this is, uh, information on our next slide drawn from multiple quarter lobbying reports. Um, the top fundraising, uh, or lobbyist fundraising going on for the runoff candidates. So this is just looking at those on the ballot this fall for the city of Los Angeles. This is combining our, everything from two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and twenty-four. Note that only goes up to June thirtieth, we are waiting for the next quarter, uh, filing period. That covers through December thirtieth, that will not be available to October thirty-first. So we will not be finding out exactly who's, uh, topping out the lobbyist fundraising. Uh, until days before Election Day, uh, which is at least before Election Day for, for the, um. Primary, we, we didn't get some of this data until afterwards for, for the last stretch. So up top, we have Adrien Nazarian pulling away sixty K plus. Um, Heather Hut, not far behind, there's a strong incumbency, uh. Trajectory here as far as the relationship establishment candidates really, really do well on the lobbyist fundraising. Um, Miguel Santiago raised a lot of lobbyist fundraising in his primary run. Kevin DeLeon really didn't start picking it up until later. Um, he, he was persona non grata earlier on and, and now some people are warming up to him a bit more. And, uh, you even got some of the other candidates, like a lobbyist, it's not a dirty word, very important to emphasize. Um, they, and there, there are some good lobbyists out there and bad lobbyists, like it's really not a, a, a subjective thing. And, and there, there are folks from all walks of life that throw money around. Uh, yes, Heather has some interesting gating stories coming around. Um, next slide. So the interesting thing to look at, and for the city of Los Angeles, we have a matching funds program. This is data that I compiled just looking at the state and, and, or misspoke, the primary and the general. Uh, you can see Isabel Gerardo just all the way out, out top. Uh, Kevin DeLeon and Gillian Burgos essentially neck and neck for the second top total lobby, or matching funds receipts. Um, Grace Yu and, and Adrien Nazarian right there, and Heather Hut still is not qualified for matching funds. Uh, which is just interesting. Um, the, uh, next slide, and I just flagged this one because it does show, you know, good grassroots fundraising. Uh, but this is, you know, money that makes these people competitive and viable. Uh, Gillian has raised a ton of money from matching funds and, and would not be a viable candidate, uh, but for that program. Uh, and, uh, you know, that, it was a hugely important program for some candidates like Isabel Gerardo. Um, uh, Eunice Hernandez, Hugo San Martinis, uh, Nithya Raman, et cetera, even Tracy Park from the right. This is not a program that just benefits lefty candidates. Uh, there are rightward candidates that have used the program to great success. Um, grassroots fundraising, this is some data that we presented. Uh, after the, or leading into the primary, um, and this just gives you an idea of, of a little bit of what we'll be looking at for the runoffs. And, uh, some of the familiar faces you see up top, you'll see, uh, reappearing if we can go to the next slide. Uh, top total grassroots fundraising for the runoff, Isabel Gerardo is way out ahead. Um, Gillian Burgos, uh, about half as much. Um, Grace Yu around five K, and then we really do start to drop off hard. Um, just amazing to think that these people are raising so much money, but only. For, for Kevin DeLeon, a thousand dollars or so of it is coming from people donating less than a hundred bucks. Uh, and, and that, even though he's right there with Heather Hut, there's clearly a difference between the two when it comes to the matching funds program. Where Kevin DeLeon is not getting a lot of small dollars, but he is getting a lot of smaller checks in the one hundred, two hundred dollar range. Uh, whereas Heather Hut is relying on a lot of max checks. If we go to the next slide, we see kind of this data as well as putting it into the context of the total amount that they've raised. And note, this is just monetary contributions, it does not include other contribution types, it does not include loans, et cetera. Um, and if we just look at that as a percentage of what they've raised, it's. I'm really, really impressive, over twenty percent, twenty, over twenty-two percent of what Gillian Burgos has raised. Uh, is coming from small dollar donors. Um, Isabel Gerardo, uh, uh, very, very strong numbers there. Uh, and then a huge drop off as you go down to some of these other candidates. And, uh, looking at Kevin DeLeon, he's raised a ton of money, but only point three, five percent of it. Is actually coming from small dollar donors. Um, so those are some of the grassroots numbers, uh, if we can go to the next slide, Ross. Just wanted to flag some things to keep an eye on, uh, ballots have dropped, so the campaign lit. Uh, contact from campaigns and outside groups is going to pick up dramatically already started. Um, the outside groups are going to be spending heavy, especially in, uh, districts two and fourteen. Um, and as we get to the last two weeks or so, that's when they decide to go very, very negative. Uh, because it's harder to respond, um, and, and that's, that's going to potentially be a very pivotal part in this. Uh, race, so I wanted to just stop and see if there was any questions on data we went over or. Questions, thoughts on the two thousand and twenty-six, um, or two thousand and twenty-four runoffs? I, I think just, uh, as far as districts ten, I, I think Heather Hut's in a strong position there, district two. Uh, probably the biggest toss-up out of any of them. The real question is, is like, eh, what, what kind of negative attacks are going to come, what kind of outside spending? Uh, the ability to respond as a campaign is something that's, it's tough to be able to respond to negative hits. Um, especially with little turnaround. Um, and, and district fourteen, uh, most of the, the rumblings on, on polling have said that, you know. Uh, Isabel's in a, in a very, very good place. But there's a whole lot of negative attacks that are, are in the pipeline, have already started to go out. And, and are probably to come and, uh, will be an interesting campaign for sure. Well, if there's nothing else on that, Ross, we can go to the next slide to close things out. Um, for our upcoming meeting, we're looking at November sixth, this is the day after the election. Uh, we'll probably spending most of our time looking at election results. So sometime around four to six PM, the election results should drop around four twenty, four thirty or so. Uh, so four PM might make a good time just to get it live, uh, or we might wait a little bit. Um, we're also looking December eleventh. Uh, at going deeper into some of the proposed neighborhood council reforms that we've been debating and talking about that we discussed at our event. Um, at City Hall a few weeks ago. Um, we've got some working groups that are working on, um, kind of developing and flushing those things out. And if you have interest in getting involved and you're not already, uh, you can reach out via email. And I do not know why Heather Hut has not qualified for matching funds. Uh, she has done a few things, she's qualified to appear on the ballot, she's participated in a debate. Um, getting a hundred in district contributions of at least five dollars or more is not easy. Um, especially in, in less well-off districts than others. Um, the other tough one is getting, um, around twelve thousand, nine hundred dollars in, in qualifying in-city contributions. And if she's getting a lot of large checks and not a lot of money from within the city. Um, from human beings as opposed to corporations, which can't get their contributions mapped. It, it can be very difficult to hit that threshold, so, uh, for, to her advantage, uh. She, she is a council member. So it's a bit easier for somebody like, uh, a council member to get. Consultants, firms, et cetera, to front them money. And to print flyers, do consulting services without getting paid until later on. For, for other folks, people want to get their bills paid. And, uh, for incumbents, sometimes what they can do or establishment candidates is. Spend the money before you got it and use the matching funds that you get after Election Day to pay off your debts. So that is something that they can do and that might be, you know, it's not a huge make or break issue if she eventually gets the money, if, even if she doesn't have it right now. Either way, she's probably not going to get the full allotment of money that's available, which is, is leaving a lot on the table. But she as an incumbent will be getting a lot of help from outside spenders, so. Maybe she's not sweating it, I don't know. Other thoughts, questions, we, we are done and well over time, so, uh, I, I credit you for, for sitting through it. And, and sincerely thank Ross, Jamie and Chris for all of your help in presenting on these measures. Uh, and, and really do want to plug, uh, Chris's voter guide. Um, and, and regardless of where you feel, uh, about, think about things ideologically, like. Somebody putting the work and effort into looking into things deeply and researching them is so helpful. Especially when there's so much random stuff on the ballot, uh, and, uh, like, we, we can only be good at the things that we're like. Put our time into and I, I just, it's, it's an enormous resource, uh, for people who cannot go out of their way to lurk into all this stuff, so. Thank you and thank you.